Okay, there's a good desire to maintain.
That's what it said.
Yeah, but what did I?
He said deserve.
Oh, deserve.
It works too.
Okay, desire.
I think desire is probably.
How about deserve and desire? We're not gonna go down that road.
Okay. Under town vision. Because I don't want to make sure everybody can't see who has the plan and who doesn't. We are focused on maintaining our western heritage that is defined by our passion for by space and low density residential development. We promote equestrian and other outdoor lifestyles such as equestrian, hiking, biking activities. Dramatic views, trails, open spaces and wildlife habitats are the hallmarks of the quality of life we seek and desire to protect. We also desire to encourage our development, artistic community.
I love horses, as everyone does. I don't think we need equestrian twice there. Lifestyles such as equestrian. We promote equestrian and other outdoor lifestyles such as equestrian.
Yeah.
Such as hiking and biking.
It is recogent.
Okay, everybody gonna be meant to strike the second equestrian?
Yeah, I think so, but I need clarification. Are we gonna do this to form or form and content? I mean, across every team and down every on that block.
Are we gonna spend all night on?
No, we're spending an hour.
Okay.
If you have any problem with any section over Mois or just speak up on that if you want. And what's being suggested is to strike equestrian now when this, we go through another workshop and another workshop and eventually comes to council. Since that, there's a change there, council will have to, are we in agreement with that? That's how we will go through it when it comes time to vote. So we're striking the second equestrian.
Well.
Recommend it.
Well, we promote outdoor lifestyle such as equestrian, hiking and biking.
You say tomato, I say tomato.
Okay, you're saying strike the first equestrian because it picks up in the second equestrian.
I actually don't wanna have an equestrian at first because.
It shouldn't be one. It's the first straight. The second one's been done, it comes after a comma, it's not a sentence structure. That's all.
Right on.
So are we striking the first or the second?
Second.
Okay, well, again, council will, when it comes up for vote, this is what we'll be discussing. The assumption is that we're agreeing on everything else and that's all right. But with the life of the general plan, we strive to.
Can I just say again, if possible, can we say we promote outdoor lifestyle such as equestrian hiking and biking activity? So we have the sentence structure correct?
I don't care. Either way, it's your government otherwise.
Strike.
Strike the first?
Yeah.
Okay. This statement here seems simple enough. Over the life of this general plan, we strive to, should we put over the ten year life? Because that's what this is. It's a ten year document.
That's fine.
Is everybody okay?
Yeah, I'm inserting ten year.
Support and maintain the quality of life. Lifestyles and property values of current and future residents with respect to the carrying... Damn, this sentence structure is strange.
This is terrible.
Support and maintain the quality of life, comma. Lifestyles and property values of current and future residents with respect to the carrying capacity of our land and our finite natural resources, especially water, including all other. I don't know what that means.
Does anyone have any insight? Yeah, I think that they're looking at limitations. In other words, we want the property values of our current and future residents, but we have to take into account these other factors, limiting factors. I'm not suggesting exactly how to revise them, but I think that's the intent of the statement.
You know, frankly. It kinda goes without saying, this is a general plan. I'm humbled, just to strike it.
Exactly.
If we're gonna rewrite it.
Either one, but strike it would be just as good as rewriting it. Because we say that contribute to our unique character and diverse lifestyles, it's on reading, it says everything again in the next four bullets.
Steve, tell me where we're gonna start from, strike.
I would just strike where it says support, because it's just kinda sort of a clumsy sentence and then the rest is, we're just saying it again.
All four bullets.
In the next three bullets. In a more specific way.
Working out from not building.
Strike. Contribute to.
And the second's above that, we're striking to over the life.
Yeah.
We strike two. No, that's a preamble, that, over the ten year.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Contribute to our unique character and diverse lifestyles.
Concern, I have a suggestion there and I know this was discussed in the zoning, zoning commission, but I think we really need to reinforce that, it's a western character mentality. We're western, we present ourselves as western, we plan the western in the future. So I suggest contribute to our unique western character. Well, the first, the paragraph before that says we are focused on maintaining our western heritage. That's the very first thing, it's maintaining.
Okay. Conserve our rich, varied, self-sustaining natural environment. Encourage tourism and development in the historic town core. Compatible with the town's character. And that's what I would have just taken.
Yeah, I guess.
Does anyone wish to define what the town's character is?
Eclectic.
I was hoping Mark would do.
Sure. Western heritage that is defined by our passion for open space and low density residential development. Promoting equestrian. Hiking and biking, outdoor, outdoor lifestyle.
It's okay. Okay, so that's been defined pretty good.
Yeah.
And then recognize and promote the commercial corridor. Development opportu... Okay, when we say commercial corridor, are we referring to the Carefree Highway?
That's what it says, keep going.
Okay, I'll give it for by the two. Ah, thank you. I should just keep reading. Cape Creek Road, South of Carefree Highway, and the Carefree Highway generally west of Cape Creek Road, consistent with the character of Cape Creek. You're wrong. The page six, introduction to provide information and recommendations to town decision makers regarding the quality of life and lifestyle desired by the residents, page three. That's the purpose of this plan. Okay, I see the purpose of this plan.
Tom, can I make a couple of suggestions on that line? I would say decision makers regarding the existing quality of life and lifestyles, and I would say enjoy by the residents of Cave Creek.
Regarding the existing?
Well, this is a.
Not just adding the future.
Existing. Yeah, but this is saying we want to maintain the existing lifestyle.
Exactly.
Lifestyle desired by the residents.
And I would change desire to enjoy.
Yes, I would agree. Dino, Dino.
Thank you, thank you.
Read it again.
Okay. Read it again, this is under the banner of the purpose of this plan. To provide information and recommendations to town decision makers regarding the existing quality of life, existing is being added, and lifestyle, strike desired and enjoy by the residents of Cave Creek.
Should that be a sentence rather than what is the preposition now starting with to provide, should we seek to provide?
It's under the banner of the purpose of this plan.
And as you look at the beginning of the next red paragraph, it starts with a sentence. Yeah, you could shake out the word two. Yes.
Okay, strike two. Uncapitalized P.
That would get something.
Yeah, are you wrong there?
I have a quick question. Today, something exists, and in 2000, something else existed. When this was done, something else existed. It's never gonna remain the same. It just seems to me regarding the quality of life, whatever that may be, because as the future goes forward, we've already seen it, at least I've seen it, with condos that are being built in the core. That came as such a shock to me, but I wasn't there to approve it either. But is that quality that we're looking for? For some of us, that's not necessarily the quality we thought we were getting, but in past councils, someone decided that all density of great val... of numerous housing was going to be in the core, which is, for me, such a surprise because that corridor can't handle hundreds and hundreds of people moving in, but I guess it's going to. So what exists?
Is there a specific project you're referring to?
Well, you've got Hidden in the House and you've got another one that's going in with sixty something condos, and that's gonna be right on the quarter. What exists now won't exist in the future. So I find existing just to be.
I think that's my, that's my attempt to preserve what we have and not lose what we have.
But as she also points out, the demographics change. More families with children.
Only if we let.
And I never understood, but the definition of what we have is.
A Carefree House.
I'll tell you, I understand what you're saying. I would just say that my, my, all of my questions that I'll bring up, speak to, trying to maintain the existing lifestyle and not have it erode more than it already has. That our western heritage does not erode further than it already has, that our rural lifestyle does not erode any further than it already has. If that doesn't do it, Susan, then maybe.
I will tell you as somebody, and I think Tom also, who sat for hours and hours and hours a day listening to the discussion that occurred here.
You were listening? I wasn't.
Well, I'm sorry you weren't. But I think what I heard, particularly from the committee, having it is your purview to do whatever you wish, is to be inclusive, not exclusive, to saying this is how it should be, because already it's changing. And it has really nothing to do with, you know, Gabor or the others that are taking place, but you've got one coming up shortly for discussion with Meredith Jones, if I'm saying that correctly.
Meredith Jones, yeah.
So you have these things that are taking place, and when they come to Cave Creek, well, evidently someone felt that they would. So that's being inclusive, that's trying to look at Cave Creek, and it will grow. But is it going to destroy five acres that someone has, or ten acres that someone has? No. But you can't make it where every building's gonna look western. There's a lot of design, I would say, and Rock is, in my opinion, not very western, but it was approved, and it goes to the heart of it being eclectic, the town that is.
But Susan, as we define, as we define it. Let me address that for a minute, as the mayor pointed out. He is quite, he asked the question, can we define our?
Character.
Character. And Councilman Linsky pointed out, we've already defined that very specifically, so when we say western, we're not talking about every, every house looking like a log cabin or a ranch, or every business looking like, you know, the old town. We're talking about something bigger than that, and within that, we've always got room, and we've never tried to design this town to be homogenous, and it shouldn't be, and that's kind of the quirky uniqueness about it. So I don't thi... I think we're, I think we're, you're right, I think we have a broad definition of what western is. In fact, we're a, we're an old western mining town when you get down to it, so, you know, I don't think then, I don't think you have to relabel it in every, in every context, is what I'm saying. Or worry about it, that that's gonna change something, or that we're being exclusive if we don't, I say again, western.
What I find interesting, I agree with you, Steve, what I find that, yeah, let's be informal, we're informals.
Sure.
Interesting is, your approach is to make sure, at every turn you can, is to make sure the western lifestyle is preserved, the rural lifestyle is preserved, so we don't lose it, and you're saying it's already started. I mean, when I look at the table here, none of us is a cowboy, but many of us are involved in horses in one way or the other. But I mean, a cowboy.
We're involved in our community, and the community, I believe, is western, so we are, we represent a community that seems to be western, whether we own the horse or not.
Here's what I don't understand, we define western, yes, we've had westerns since day one, because we live in the west. By geographic, by geographic, you know, fate, this is where the town is, it's in Cave Creek, Arizona, okay, so it's in the west. That has nothing to do with whether everything looks like old town, and it has nothing to do with following TC on a buffalo or wearing new boots and a big hat, it just does it.
I don't know, we just, I think we've got the idea of western.
This is what you do when you're redoing the general plan, you just.
I would prefer not to accept what you're saying as, as precedent for the future. What's happened prior to today, or up until today, as precedent for the future. I would rather say, you know, when I made my little movie, most of the time when I said, described Cave Creek, they said it's, it's an old western town. Yes, it's eclectic, yes, it's artistic.
Not anymore.
No. No, that's how they describe it today.
My problem is always, I have pieces of property in this town, I've been here twenty-eight years, that didn't develop because previous administrations didn't think it was western. And it sat there. No apartments, no business, nothing. That doesn't work for me.
If you want cash registers, you have to build something.
I don't know, how many cash registers do we need?
As many as we can get.
Why?
Because we are buddying up against some really heavy competition. Were you here when we didn't go with Walmart or with Home Depot?
We don't.
Now every person at this table goes here, that's why.
Well, no, not everyone.
Well, you're not here all the time.
I'm here most of the time.
Maybe you're not a stakeholder, when was the last time you were here?
Do we have to make this whole meeting about you, Dick?
Wait, 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 wait. I can tell you from experience that the gentleman who sat at this table and one woman were much kinder to one another, so if we could bring the level down a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
I have a question, because this thing has been beat up for over a year.
Okay, about here, about here. So you've won. You have your commercial corridor as described in the plan here at Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway. You got your cash registers, you got your big cash registers, and they keep coming. But that doesn't mean that we need more and more cash registers until there are no more cash registers left on earth, right? Or do we need that?
I think you're trying to preserve the core.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah. I don't. Well, which, what's the core? We don't have a core anymore. We have, that's a core, this is a core.
We have four thousand acres of open space, and we need cash registers.
We don't have a core anymore, we have two cores. We have a core here, and we have a core over there.
And you can describe this one as the historic.
I just don't want to have a third core, and a fourth core, and a fifth core.
We won't live that long.
How do you know? We have no cash registers, maybe we will.
Can we get that?
I'm trying to agree with you.
No, for me, this is the heart of the, of the conversation.
Sure, and you can go and look at Scottsdale and say that that original old town was so much a part of Scottsdale, and most of us who've been here and watched it change and grow, and now live with it today.
Yeah, it sucks, that's why we all live here, and not Scottsdale. Or am I wrong about that?
Well, there are a lot of places that are very close to Scottsdale.
I want to, wanna live here as much as I do now, forever. I don't wanna look back and say, look what we let happen, we let it become another Scottsdale.
Okay, but we always use Scottsdale as a comparison point, but that's not our community. There's a quarter of a million people. No, but there's a quarter of a million people that live in Scottsdale that like it just the way it is. It's a very in each, conscious city. That's not who we are. But when I think of here, when I think of Cave Creek, I don't think of western, and I don't think of cowboy, I think of desert. That's, in my heart and my soul, it's filled with desert. That has nothing to do with being cowboy or being western, although it could be argued, well, if it's desert, you're in the west. It doesn't exist east of the Mississippi, but.
You're saying, Robert's saying, it'll be better.
I think eclectic is dangerously close to not what Cave Creek has always been. And I know, and I know it's, it's a little esoteric, but people keep saying eclectic, eclectic, yeah, but when people say, tell me what Cave Creek's like, they don't say it's eclectic, it's not the first thing they say.
You say it's just phenomenal. They say it's an old western town.
I've also heard. I've heard them say funky and eclectic is the first two words. Yes, we have western characteristics about ourselves, but I would argue that the arts community in Cave Creek is as strong as the western or the cowboy culture.
I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying.
But I don't know that they're western.
I'm not saying they're western, I'm saying the town at its core has maintained its western heritage, believes, wants to have that western heritage.
How are you defining western heritage? Maybe that won't have a problem with it.
I don't either. I don't know, why do we have, why do we have the two major events that we have in this town that are all about rodeo and, and old west fiestas?
And left out Mark Red's chaw and his bike. They don't ride horses.
Why does this town promote?
Cyclists brought in eighty million dollars.
Why are those two primary events related to our western heritage? Why don't we have?
That's the only thing we have to sell.
Because we have.
Why is that? We don't have a stage, and they already have the Phoenix Cirque.
Mark, for God's sake, it's that way because we have four big spot, big box bars that make the money off of those events, and so they're willing to support it, and that's why we have Wild West Days.
We're on your side, believe it or not.
Yeah, and as far as condos in the town core, that's been in the general plans since nineteen eighty-six.
That's right.
Everybody anticipated there'd be condos in the town core, and people walking around and it actually being a community, and not like it used to be a long time ago, where it was, it looked a lot more, a lot more, like stuff built on the side of a highway and you were just passing through.
Exactly.
And you forget those days. So I think the more we get the town core hopping, and I don't mean hopping in a bad way, and I don't mean it be a biker town or label something, but this, this, this artificial, and I guess I, maybe this is my hot point, right? Somebody comes in from New Jersey, all right?
Oh, let's not speak of them.
Buys a couple horses and starts telling, you know, that hawkeye talk bars, or, you know, trust me, there was a lot of hookers up here for the miners, but this wasn't a big time hawkeye talk bar place, it was pretty low down and dirty in the old days. So, you know, but what drives the special events is, is big bars that make a lot of money on those kind of events. That's what, that's what does it. And that's not going away, and there's no, and it shouldn't go away, that's, that's one piece. But if you're gonna define our western, our western heritage or our western character or our western lifestyle as a mirror of what the big box bar, where the big box bars make their money, that's not it either. There's eighty-five percent of the citizens of this town don't go to the bars.
If you think Wild West Days and Fiesta Days are not going away, if we don't do something to maintain them, then I think you're very much mistaken.
Well, I'll tell you what, I didn't say we shouldn't maintain, I said they are a piece of this, of this community, but they're just one piece.
It's an important piece, and I think everything else.
Steve, you talked about branding, what branding can we take? I think one of the best kinds of branding we can take is western, and it's desert, and it's bars, and it's a lot of things.
And it's.
But if you wanna go somewhere.
It's hikers, and it's.
Yeah.
Tortoises, and it's open space.
If you wanna go for somewhere that's.
There's our brand right there, right there.
And that's coyotes, don't eat those guys.
I understand when you say that, I don't know if I would agree to it, but since I understand where you're coming from, I'm okay with it. I wouldn't exactly say that as western. The first word to come, that's wild to me, that's wild, that's on team, that wants to be free, that's independent, but I don't necessarily see it as western.
I think this is one. You're just defining the American one.
I think this is one thing that pulls a lot of these things together, is western. If you wanna go somewhere in the valley that is art centered, you know, you can get that in Cave Creek. But if you ask the people, well, what is it about Cave Creek that makes it unique? Oh, it's kind of a western place, and I think we have, and can capitalize on that.
And I think it's not just that you're thinking on a one dimensional way, you know, I think the bars, I think the bars and even our, our commercial, our Chamber of Commerce, whatever the hell you wanna call them, and they do, should promote that aspect of this town. But for a whole lot of the citizens, it has nothing to do with that at all, in fact, it's, they would just, it has to do with having ten acres, it has to do with being next to the original park.
And it has, and it has to do with what Dick was saying, ka-ching, ka-ching, people are coming up here because they think we're western, so let's call it that.
But the general plan, the general.
I think we can be eclectic too, I think we can take in all these.
Tom, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make a point to you, you keep talking, you keep talking about this general plan, as for some dude in Phoenix that wants to come up and have a few beers or something. This general plan is for the citizens of this town, and what I'm telling you is that the vast majority of them aren't in the bars a lot. I mean, we want the folks in Phoenix to come, and they're happy to put, most of them are happy to put up with some of the inconvenience and stuff, but that's not why they're in Cave Creek, and that's not what this town's been about forever. It's part of it, it's part of it, but it's, it's not the defining part of it, it's not a character, it's not some, you know, east coast fantasy about, about what a cowboy's about.
How do we not want to be?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
How would it not be like Scottsdale? How would it not be like Scottsdale? Scottsdale is have another four thousand acres of open space and have, that is the core of our community.
Bingo.
Bingo. That's how, that's how we do that, and we do support our rodeo, we do support the western stuff, and, but, you know, we're living in 2016, and.
The harder we support the western stuff, the more the other stuff happens, I guess that's my point. And whether you believe that or not, but I believe that.
I think it's really healthy for this town to have bike rides, I think it's really healthy for this town to have art, the art walks, I think it's really healthy for this town to have a vibrant arts community, a vibrant hawkeye talk bar and park, so I think there's a lot of room for everything. And by the way, if you're talking about sustaining the town, if there's something here for a lot of people, a lot of different kind of people, then more people are gonna come, you're gonna have a bigger share of the market.
Absolutely, I agree.
So even on a commercial standpoint, that's.
Mark, when I was a kid, Scottsdale did not want stoplights.
That's right.
None. And ask Mr. Frye what Scottsdale has done now with Desert Mountain, and they didn't stop there, they went almost all the way to Seven Spring.
You're making my point, yeah. I don't wanna see that happen.
Which is what? They're not western, and they have the largest, second largest western rodeo.
Do you want Cave Creek to be like Scottsdale?
It's thirty-seven.
I think part of it might be after I'm gone.
I'd rather not see that happen.
How are you gonna stop private property?
You don't stop it.
You mean stop it.
Susan mentioned something about one of these things is coming up and they wanna build condos, and it happens to be a piece of property that's sat there for over thirty years. Nothing.
That's what open space is, it's a lot of nothing, Dick, do you wanna?
Not in the core.
That's not commercial.
It's not.
There was a time, you know, I don't, you don't say that there's nothing.
I mean, that's what elevates our spirit, that nothing out there.
That's what I'm saying.
Very western.
That's what I'm saying, Dick is saying that it's been laying there and it's just been nothing, it's not nothing, it's all.
That's why people who were running the town didn't want what the developer wanted, they wanted what they wanted. They wanted to have a committee for architectural review.
How many acres?
The parapet since...
How many acres in from Carefree Highway does that property begin? That's ten, ten or fifteen, one's all the way down Forty-Eighth Street.
Yeah, but you're talking about the one in town right now. You're talking about the one in the core. The planning is on... You haven't seen it yet.
You're talking about the one that's just under whatever they're doing over there?
That's hit and rock. No, no, that's just...
I'll talk about that. I thought you were talking about the one that's in the SAP.
I don't wanna mess with the core.
We have to have it.
It's behind ours.
Right. You have to go ahead and...
Okay, right.
Let me make one statement again. It was, the objective portion of this in the introduction was to be inclusive and not exclusive. Many of us do, and are extremely fortunate to live in Cave Creek. And when people probably come to visit my home, what I hear a lot of is, "Wow, the views are fantastic. How wonderful, the coyotes at night, the javelina that used to come on my patio." It's amazing, and that's what you want to keep, which is not necessarily Western, because each of us who own our property see our property differently.
We're gonna save that.
Are you saying you don't want that?
No, I do want that.
We have it.
I have that.
Do you wanna lose that?
No, you won't lose that, because that's private property.
The only way we're not gonna lose that in general is by preserving it. And not just saying as many cash registers as possible, and not rezoning things, and not...
As a referendum, I think we should keep in mind as the elected people of the town, that twice when referendums were taken out to stop commercial development, the citizens showed up at the polls and said, "No, we want commercial development out there." So that's twice they did.
Absolutely.
So that tells me that there is room for both. At the same time that we have commercial development out there, I mean, while it's as commercial as it gets, we also have spur cross. We also have the 4,000 acres that Steve has been working so hard on, and we're gonna get exactly where we want it. So it seems that we have the best of both wombs here. The project that is being referenced, the one down here at Schoolhouse Road, is Maritide. I've met three times with the developer, and it's taking the proper course. It will come to council, it'll come to PMZ, and it'll come to council. So the council decides whether or not they want that type of project down there. It's not a done deal. He's following the proper channels. You know, he has this idea, he owns the property, he would like to do this, different than what that property is zoned for, and that's a commercial piece of property. And the entire committee will get a chance to hear the presentation when it comes through the process, which is the way it should be.
Mark, I'm arguing against that. No, all I'm saying is I wanna maintain our lifestyle.
And you agree with that.
That's all I'm saying.
And Mark, we can go back. You know, this may help tie things together. We can go back. On the first page, it did say Western, so we're there.
How do you find it for the mayor?
I know, I remember. I'm just talking about this existing lifestyle. If you don't want existing, strike it. Go ahead.
I have existing in, and it will follow.
Susan wants it out.
Well, no, I didn't say I wanted it out. I was only trying to...
It started this so hard.
That's not what I said, because I was defining existing. It's not what is existing now, because this is a ten-year document, which may not exist. So it just, it just, I think it would all need a little more open-ended idea.
All you can do is plan, all you can do in this document is say, "We would like to preserve what we have now," because it is utter speculation about what there might be in ten years. So I don't even know.
I don't know, Lee.
Where are we talking about in this document?
We are on page seven.
I'm sure the same last page, Mark.
Yeah, I am sure the same. They are all the same thing.
It's fine.
And to me, this is, this is how, this is the way a general plan should be discussed.
More guys over by the wall know all about it. Do you want existing or you don't want existing? That's all that's holding this up.
You're gonna be rolling my top. No, no, no. No, we're not making that just, you voted in, and it will be in, and it will get debated upon council at the proper time. We will vote on whether or not it's staged or not. But we certainly understand where you're coming from.
I have no future comment on page seven.
There's a whole number, there's a hard number of paragraphs.
Yeah, I know.
I'm fine. You've got nothing marked on your page, right?
No, not until page eight.
Okay, so we've got a little bit of all we need. The header, the header is how this plan should be used.
It was a title, it was on the page, right?
And the script reads, "In accordance with Arizona law, the general plan guides land use and zoning decisions by the town. The general plan does not change existing zoning." Ian, you wanna weigh in on that one? That's a correct statement, and is it stated properly?
Yes.
Okay. Because that can, we've had problems with that in the past. Okay. However, future zone changes...
Future zoning changes.
Zone is fine.
Zone is fine, okay. Must conform to the general plan. Okay. This, to me, is the heart of a general plan as opposed to making zoning changes, which council has done in the past. And what this statement is saying is that any zoning changes that are being proposed must conform to this plan.
That's why I had no other comment on that.
Yeah, I understand why you said that. That, to me, is getting pretty close to draconian. That statement is getting pretty close to pulling around, I'm just speaking for me. It's too close to threatening to private property rights.
How is that possible?
Everybody has a right to do a process to come and pay their fees and go through the process, and we can all say no. The planning commission would say no, but they've got the right to come there and do that.
We're precluding their right, but I don't think this precludes their right.
No, when they say conform to this plan, the plan is general, it's guidance.
This is not...
I know that it's saying must. Must is a pretty imperative word. It's saying this is the way you must do something. You don't have an option of doing it this way or that way. It's not negating process. I'm not saying that, but that's a very strong statement, and that's where the general plan shall be.
Yes, it must conform to the general plan, which encourages tourism, recognizes and promotes stuff, focuses on things, supports and maintains stuff, contributes to things. It doesn't impose anything.
Vincent, which word would you put there instead of must? You want to give us the...
I don't like it to be taken seriously personally.
I'm just saying that this sentence, and that which follows the semicolon, is where the debates have taken place in the past. If somebody can reference, the general plan has been used as basically the Holy Grail, and someone comes in with this far-out idea, "Well, it's not in the general plan." And the document, instead of being a guide, becomes a weapon. And I see that too often in this zoning change. No, no, I'm just expressing my feelings.
If we don't have a point of view, then why have a general plan at all? Let anyone come in with anything they wanna do? Because you have a yes or no, whatever. Why should there be a general plan at all?
My ultimate ideal, the plan is respect your neighbor, respect the desert. That's my ultimate ideal.
Okay, well, I think that's what that does.
Well, I proposed that before. I was saying, "Well, no, no, you need rules." And I go, "Okay, well, then..."
I think using the word must does exactly what you just said. It makes you respect your neighbor and respect the desert.
Can I make a, and I think if this happened when these gentlemen were putting this together, I think what this was supposed to do is encourage when people come in to fore zoning changes or whatever, that it's to encourage them to read this document too. So they must, I think they're looking at Shell or something, read it, or... But I encourage people to read it. Otherwise, people will come into town to develop or do whatever they, and never even look at the document. And this was, I think the sentence was to encourage them to read it.
Well, if they didn't read it, why would they be encouraged to read it?
How much people, well, they don't. They don't as well as me. At the end, they read this document.
I think, you know, what we're trying to do is exactly what you just said. I agree with you completely. And I think what this does comes as close as we can come to guaranteeing that.
No, I'm not suggesting change. I'm just commenting on the... Well, I don't find you argumentative. I find you very sincere in calling for...
Just annoying.
People can see if that was...
Well, I don't see you as argumentative. Okay, everything else is fine. There are two other potential residential developments. Everybody's fine with that. And owner has been changed to owners. Along with, has been struck and considers... Page eight.
Here, I just have a question. It's, the second paragraph, what talks about unpaved roads. Is it a moot point now because almost all the roads are paved? Is that why that's all crossed out? Or there's still plenty of unpaved roads, which are part of our Western lifestyle, that we would wanna maintain if we possibly can without imposing or, you know, I understand that there are regulations about dust and all of that.
Your EPA has changed.
No, no, I get that. I understand that. But where people just wanna pave it because they like paved roads versus because there's a, you know, because EPA is gonna, you know, swoop down.
There comes your track out to, you know, sort of all its fall, the auspices of environmental protection is...
My first of several appearances in the local newspaper was because they were, somebody decided on their own to pave Fleming Springs Road and get rid of the dirt up there, and I was not happy about that at all.
Oh, I'm not either, but we don't have a choice.
Well, up there, we had a choice, and somebody just did it. And so if we cross stuff like this out, then people are just gonna assume they can just do it, which would be a bad thing, I think.
Are you saying you don't want anyone to pave their road on their private property?
I think that most town roads that are currently unpaved contribute to the rural character of our community, which is what we say we wanted earlier in this document. And that we should do what we can to protect the integrity of these roads despite pressures from development outside the town or inside the town. That's what I'm saying.
The other factor that has to be considered there is the county and the whole PM10. That's where we got into the whole...
Dust is a carcinogenic cause of cancer.
I get it. I get it. And I love what you said about the Fleming Springs property again. I can't wait for you to get out there with your scientific instruments and tell them a thing or two.
We don't want that. Fountain Hills wanted to monitor some of that.
Okay, you want this to be included.
I think it should be included. Unless it's a moot point, because, you know, because we just can't have dirt roads anymore. If that's the case, then that's the case. See, I'm just asking a question.
You know, the problem is with the county and with the PM10. If you've got a dirt road adjacent to a paved road, and it rains, and you drive out there, and that mud gets on the road, then when it dries, how do you become PM10 dust particulates? And then actual individual property owners could be cited for those issues. So it's meaningless anymore because the controls have taken away.
That's the first thing I said, is it a moot point?
It's really a...
Well, unless you qualify the sentence. Those town roads, that's a true statement, are currently unpaved, contribute to the rural character. That's also true. The plan includes recommending to protect the integrity of these roads. And there you would have to add, as long as it is in conjunction with current laws.
Sure.
Regulations. Unless I'm alone at the table. Oh, I'd rather have the dirt, because it's called fugitive dust, and we've taken away from us, so...
I can't believe the one time I agree with you, Ernie, you're just like...
Oh, I agree in principle, but unfortunately, there's this thing called law. And I voted against the dust ordinance both times, by the way, so...
I wanted to go back to the previous paragraph, where Steve, where it says the open space element, and you're going with the 4,000 acres, is that, is that correct wording?
That's not where I was concerned. It's when we talk about the annex, specifically talking about the annexation agreement where we get those...
Okay, so we're okay now.
Okay, I have a question on the third line down on the page. Spur Cross Range Conservation Area, that's somewhere that we control, Cave Creek to wash. What's Kahaba Ridge? What is that? There's a private development called Kahaba Ridge, we don't regulate that. So Kahaba Ridge, you could put in there Apache Springs, yes?
It's in here.
Well, but...
But what is Kahaba Ridge?
Some just, Ian, the mayor runs the council. Kahaba Ridge, Kahaba Springs, designated land to the town, eighty acres. And that town, for that, we have...
So you're saying Kahaba Ridge essentially...
Page eight. Page nine. Okay, public involvement.
I hate when that happens.
Everybody good with the first paragraph?
Yeah.
Second paragraph?
Yep. First remaining, yes. Second paragraph?
Fine.
And third? Under strategies, David, you crossed out meetings and hearings. Is there a reason why CMZ was...
Oh, we, there's a difference between a meeting and a hearing.
I know there is.
Like your meeting, but when you sit up there, it's essentially, it comes down to a hearing. And that's a differentiation that we wanted to make.
Is there a difference between a hearing and a workshop?
Yes.
We're in a workshop.
We are in a workshop now. We adjourned from the council, and we're not, now we're in a workshop. Okay, and all these recipients of our planning commission meetings are the...
Actors.
Okay.
Does that matter? Mayor?
Yes.
I don't think that's enough. I really don't see anything here that addresses the intense lack of participation in town council meetings by Cave Creek citizens. And I have the thing, not that I expect to see a full house for all the time to... But I think a lot of people, A, don't know the third town council meetings when they occur, and B, don't understand the importance of what goes on every couple of three years. And I don't think we do nearly enough to encourage people to come here.
We know we're not on the half of it.
Yeah.
Mark, is that something you wanted in a policy action?
Well, it's saying provide effective notice of public hearings and meetings in these ways.
But notice is not the issue, because they've got notice, but you'd like more encouragement.
No, I'd like more notice and different kinds of notice. Well, it's in here, so I don't worry about it.
You may be right in characterizing that way, but there is another alternative. Maybe the citizens of the community feel that the council, that everything is fine. The council is doing its, well, I'm just putting out yet another job, because we find out very quickly when the citizens get, when they're not happy with their council. They're not shy about taking a course of action. So is it apathy, or are they actually happy with the job that the council is doing?
We never hear that.
Well, I do communicate with them. Our meetings are on the internet. We do communicate with them, our meetings are on the internet. Are there other ways of informing them of what's going on? That's, we would need a lot of legal input there, because if the town is informing the citizens of what's going on, it has to be very careful that it's not taking, doing so in a political language.
It isn't to do with political, just, you know, Coke is a successful company, not because it's a good soft drink, but because there's been nonstop constant reminders for people to drink Coke since almost the day the company incorporated. The fact that people aren't here goes beyond the fact that they may or may not care. I think there are lots of people, I talk to them all the time about, you know, are you gonna come to the town council meeting? And the answer is often, what town council are you in? They don't know that it's happening, they don't know when it's happening, they don't know how important it may or may not be. They certainly aren't looking at an agenda to see whether it has an impact, direct or indirect, on their lives. The fact that it's on the website, I go on the website fairly frequently and often can't find what I'm looking for, much less am blasted in the face with, come to tonight's town council meeting.
Okay, I guess my question is, are they apathetic or not interested? Or are they just busy with their lives?
I think they're unencouraged. I think they're not being encouraged by their town leaders to attend. I think their town leaders are satisfied with doing the minimum amount of notification. And who shows up, shows up, and I think that's wrong.
What if it's the other way around, that the citizens are satisfied with what their town council...
I think some are.
I mean, they elect us to do a job, basically.
Sure, I think some are. I think most don't vote.
I'm following you at all.
What I'd like to do is try to encourage more participation through better notification and clearer...
He's invited them to a one-hour meeting with the mayor.
Who did he invite? How did he invite?
Unfortunately, it's usually interference of others, people that are sitting to my left. A nation has a specific agenda, and it's not good.
But who did we invite? You know, when you try to put them in the water bill, nobody, you read the garbage that comes in your water bill? I don't. I take it out, I throw in the garbage first.
I do that. I guess you're an apathetic citizen, then, right?
No, I'm apathetic to the garbage that comes in a water bill that's not the actual water bill.
Can you give some specific...
I know, I have old people over on Monday mornings, I should try and say, tonight you need to be in there at seven o'clock because we've got a council meeting.
Make council meetings mandatory.
Well, Australia, you can't vote, you say, fine. You gotta go to the council meetings, otherwise it's good.
But what about something that actually...
I don't mean the offense, I think you're being a little polyant with...
Well, can I get to an idea?
The notion's of, we have these poor citizens that are just dying to get involved and come down to town council and listen to this crap. And if they've just had more inspired leaders to invite them, they'd be here. I frankly think that's kind of a...
Have you ever tried it? Have you ever tried it, Steve?
Well, here's a point.
Yeah.
Really, how?
I talked to people, they were like, hey, you know, come on down to town council meeting. The only neighbor that ever responded to me getting involved at all is Dick Frye. He's doing the hell of a job. I try all the time.
I think the only fair way, and I don't know if that's, by the way, I agree with you, holding a sign outside on the street, and I've experienced with that, gets a lot of attention.
I know, I know all about you.
But, you know, maybe it's a monthly, you know, postcard to everyone with...
I don't want you to do the same with your work. You know it's legal.
I honestly don't understand the reticence of going out of our way a little bit to try to ensure that people participate, that our citizens participate in this very important process. I'm a little astounded by the lack of...
Their heads are...
At least, we're just coming to different conclusions as to why the citizens are doing something. And I would suggest for you to write down a couple of ideas, and then my next question, should those ideas be in the general plan?
Well, many ideas are in the general plan, and I think more than, we need more than these.
More than these people that we are notifying.
I think these notifications probably accomplish little to nothing. And they're in here because somebody decided, well, either it's because by law they need to be in there or, you know, one day some very naive person suggested, you know, it might help.
But if there's anything... Parents, I've only got three minutes left. I have a solution.
Well, as the mayor pointed out, there'll be many more opportunities, Dick.
Yeah, put something out.
I'd like to make a single comment, though. The Cape Creek kind of high school district, let's not get this much. And we're talking about six thousand kids, a hundred and, a hundred seventy-seven square miles with thirty thousand people. And I would only see principals who had to be there, or on a very rare occasion. So we get more people in this small town than we do in a school district. And kids, I think, are really important, too.
I think we put out a better show.
And, yeah, I think, you know, some people show up and think, depending on what is important in their lives...
Exactly.
Last week, I gave a lecture at the library, wanted to, needed to give a lecture on happiness from a Buddhist perspective, which I gave, and I thought a few people would show up. It was beyond standing room only. That's what interests people right now, to hear someone, the mayor of all people. I mean, at one point, I'm thinking to myself, exactly where do I get off talking about happiness from a Buddhist...
Did they find that out from sending an invitation to the town of Carefree Planning Department?
The library does...
I know, well, we should be, right, so we should be taking advantage of the fact, well, the library is there.
That may be a point too, but what I'm saying is people respond to what really interests them.
They also respond to what they learn, what they understand is, you know, occurring. If they don't know that it's happening, they're certainly not gonna show up. And if we make no attempt to, 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 uh, try to make them understand how important this, what happens in this room is to them and their families and their friends, then they're never gonna show up.
Well, then come up with some ideas. And the next question will be for council, if I should go in a general plan, but come up with the ideas. Look, we're at nine fifteen, I promise you now, but before we go, Ian, give council your tape on this process that we have just started, page ten.
Yeah, remember as the council, I enjoyed observing the planning commission work through this document that we were six workshops, plus some, in addition to sitting down one-on-one. Council members with wire and plants and the necessary all observed that. This has actually been even more fun. This has been like point, counterpoint, ten, seven.
Well, can we take that as a compliment?
Yes.
Turn it around.
Very important. Don't miss page eleven, whatever you...
Yeah.
Thank you, council.
Don't forget to take your packets over to town.
Mark, you and I need to have...
You need a drink.